All right, we're gonna call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you can do the roll call.
Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Brandal, Councilmember Capriolio, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Soria, and Council President Baines.
Here. If we can all stand, we'll have the invocation by Mark Hudson, City of Fresno Police Sergeant, and remain standing because immediately following, we will salute the flag.
Well, thank you, Council President, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Sal Quintero for inviting me here today to do the invocation. Father, it says in your word that if we humble ourselves in prayer, that turn from our wicked ways, then you would hear from heaven and heal our land. Lord, today we come before you humbly and ask that you would pour out a blessing that we couldn't contain. We pray for your blessing upon our nation and our nation's leaders. We ask that you would protect those serving in our military and comfort their families while they're away from home. We pray for blessing upon our city and everyone who calls Fresno home. Lord, let us be the shining light on the hill that others would be drawn here to see your face. We pray for blessing upon our mayor, our council members, and all who every day come into our city and call this place home. Restore and prosper Fresno, and guide the decisions of our leaders with wisdom and knowledge. Finally, Lord, we pray for the protection of our police officers and firemen as they serve the citizens of Fresno. Let their light shine in those dark places, keep them strong and compassionate and caring as they do the work that you've called them to do. Thank you, Father, and we ask for these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Face the flag, ready, salute. All right, we have one ceremonial presentation today. It's be delivered by my office, and it's a celebration of Juneteenth Day. All right. Well, listen, I'm gonna have my dear friend Kena McFadden come on down as the representative of the Fresno Juneteenth Committee. And just a very quick background on Juneteenth, and I'm gonna give a quick background and let Kena talk a little bit about the events lined up for this weekend. But Juneteenth, many of you may not know, is a holiday that African-Americans celebrate throughout the country. And most of you remember when the Emancipation Proclamation was signed in January of 1863, that we didn't have email, we didn't have even, you know, real quick postal service back then. So it actually took a very long time for slaves throughout the South to realize that they had been emancipated. So the reason why we celebrate the Emancipation Proclamation in June is because in Galveston, Texas, which was the last place to find out they were free, they didn't find out until June 19th, although they had been freed since January 1st of that year. So in a very symbolic way, what the African-American community throughout the country does is celebrate a holiday called Juneteenth. And we've been doing it here in Fresno for about 30 years, I believe, and we're coming up on June 19th on Saturday, and I have Kena McFadden here from the Fresno Juneteenth Committee, and she can talk a little bit about some of the events that will be happening this weekend.
Thank you, President. We're honored to be here and to be able to give you a little insight on the celebration weekend that we have planned. This Friday, we're going to kick it off with a baseball game at the Grizzlies Stadium. I don't know if many of you knew that we had a Negro baseball league here called the Tigers. And so in honor of that league, the Grizzlies players will be wearing the jerseys, the throwback jerseys, and they'll be playing in their honor this Friday at the Grizzlies Stadium. We're inviting you all to come out. About 7 o'clock is the pitch, and the first pitch at 7:00, and so that's how we're gonna kick off Juneteenth. And then on Saturday, we have the parade, and the parade starts in the Food Mac Shopping Center. And it's gonna go from the Food Mac Shopping Center to our new middle school in West Fresno, Golden West Side of Fresno, which is Gaston Middle School. And then that's where the festivities will start, with the program kicking off with the National Anthem, color guards, lots of entertainment, lots of food, lots of vendors, and Kid's Zone, Teen's Zone, car show, you name it. It's gonna be going on from 12 to 8:00 p.m. So we invite you to either share, and invite those to come on out and join us as we celebrate our freedom.
All right, thank you, Ms. McFadden. Yes, deserve a round of applause. And in a shameless plug that I'll have for myself, I'll say that I used to actually chair the Juneteenth Committee a few years ago, and I've actually organized a couple of those events. It's a fantastic weekend full of events. Madam Clerk, would you mind reading the proclamation?
Whereas the annual Fresno Juneteenth Weekend Event is Friday and Saturday, June 19th and 20th, 2015, and celebrates the African-American community's addendum to Independence Day. Juneteenth is a nationally recognized and celebrated holiday that commemorates the notification of the Emancipation Proclamation to Gaston, Texas, on June 19th, 1865, which the Fresno community has been celebrating for more than 30 years. With this year's theme, "A Family Affair," the event will serve to recognize the importance of achieving your goals and desires, daring to dream bigger than you can imagine, and then working to achieve it. And whereas, as part of the festivities, the Fresno Grizzlies will host the Third Annual Juneteenth Negro League Commemorative Game in honor of the Fresno Tigers on June 19th, 2015. This year, the Grizzlies will feature Fresno's own Negro team, the Fresno Tigers. The Fresno Grizzlies will wear the Tiger jersey as they play against Las Vegas Area 51s. The game will start at 7:00 p.m., and the gate opens at 5:00. After the game, the players' jerseys will be auctioned off in a live auction, with the portion of the proceeds going to Fresno Juneteenth. On Saturday, June 20th, the Fresno Juneteenth Collaborative Committee will host the annual Juneteenth Celebration at Rutherford Gaston Middle School, located at 1100 East Church Avenue from 12 to 7:00 p.m., and will feature local performances, inspirational speakers, workshop food, and games. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the members of the Fresno City Council do hereby declare June 19th and 20th, 2015, to be Juneteenth Weekend in the City of Fresno.
All right, moving right along on our agenda, we will now move to the approval of amendments. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? The minutes are laid over? Okay, my apologies. So we'll move right on to council member reports and comments. Any council members wishing to make any reports today? Seeing none, we'll move to today's agenda. Oh, Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. The honor to thank the Homeless Task Force and Public Works. We had a situation at Granite Park, and they quickly responded and resolved that for us. I wanted to publicly acknowledge their hard work and thank them for taking care of the situation out there. Next, tonight is Home of Hope drawing, and it's $100 a ticket, and for that ticket, you have an opportunity to win a home valued, I think, $375,000. The home happens to be in my district, the best district, anyway. I hope all of you will buy a ticket and participate. It's a beautiful home, it's a beautiful area, they have a park already established, the streets, the irrigation, it's really a beautiful, beautiful home. So that'll be done out there at Shields and Fowler, so I encourage you all to come out and participate and have some fun, and hopefully win a house. Last Tuesday, we had a drawing for Alexis from Home of Hope, and that, the proceeds from all this goes to 10 local charities, and those dollars stay local. So it's really a benefit for the City of Fresno. And there was one other thing that I forgot now that I needed to say, but I might pick it up later. Thank you, Council President.
No problem. I'd just like to ask all of us for a moment of silence. Most of us have been following the news and heard about the nine shooting victims in Charleston, South Carolina, at the historic Emanuel African-American African Methodist Episcopal Church. Obviously, it was an awful tragedy, so I'm just gonna ask that we just pause for a moment of silence and be with that community back there. All right, thank you. Next, we're going to approve our agenda, and I know I have Councilmember Brandal.
Yes, Council President, I'd like to continue Item 2F. We have a special meeting on home and HUD and CDBG funding next Tuesday, I believe. You have called a special meeting of council for that topic, so I would like to include this item in that day's discussion.
Okay. City Attorney, we can include it that day?
I think if we show it continued to that date, there won't be a problem.
Okay. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you again. I want to remind everyone tonight, starting at 6:00 p.m., Fresno Airport, Fresno Yosemite International Airport, the Honor Flight will be returning from Washington, D.C. And I've been to several of these welcoming WWII and Korea, the Korean War veterans, and it's really, I'm getting chills now talking about it. It's amazing to see these veterans, I call them really the true freedom fighters, to come back from such an experience, and the tears, and the joy, and all the things that they talk about and share with us. It's really amazing. Kevin from Airport does a great job accommodating them. It's just a great experience. So if you wanna see an old-fashioned rally and patriotism and people that make this all possible today, I urge you to be there 6:00 tonight at the Fresno Yosemite International Airport. Thank you.
All right. Now, I would like to move our 8:30 a.m. Friday special meeting to adopt the budget to Tuesday at 9:00 a.m., and just give us a day off on tomorrow and take care of all of our business on Tuesday. City Attorney, I can do that right now?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Yeah, just move the budget here into Tuesday, no meeting tomorrow. So we'll just take care of everything on Tuesday. Councilmember Olivier. Okay, very good. All right, so now I have an amended, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? All right, now we will go out to the consent calendar. Do I have any council members that would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll now take the consent calendar out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on any item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Council, what's your pleasure? Motion? All right, we have a motion and a second.
I did want to pull 1B, sorry. I just needed to know the funding source for that $275,300.
So you would like to pull Item 1B?
Please.
Okay. So we'll remove Item 1B. Do we have a motion to adopt the balance of the consent calendar? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Do we have staff here for Item 1B? And Councilmember Capriolio, the floor is yours. We do? Do we have staff here for Item 1B? Okay.
Good afternoon, Council, welcome, Design Services Manager. Design Services Manager, Public Works Capital Management Division.
Thank you.
I'm here to answer questions.
On the project that this reflects the overlay, what is the source of the money? The cost of the project, I believe, is $385,400 gross.
The funds came from the CDBG monies that were given to Public Works Department.
And will it have any impact on our general fund dollars?
No, nothing at all.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? All right. All those in favor? All opposed? Item pass, Councilmember Soria. Item passes, 7-0. Now we are gonna move to our 130 hearing. It's a hearing regarding the renewal of the Downtown Fresno Property and Business Improvement District. If I can have Tom Richards come up?
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. I'm Tom Richards. I'm 855 M Street, both here as a businessman and as a director of the Downtown Partnership. We don't want to take a lot of your time tonight, I'm happy are this afternoon, but we are happy to have a few of our board members here, which are certainly representative of all of us on the board, a hard-working, committed board who is here to thank you for your past, present, and your future support for the Downtown Partnership to allow us to help you to improve our neighborhoods, our neighborhood downtown, in the areas of safety, security, and economic growth. And we don't want you to, for a moment, think it's lost on us. Without your support, we wouldn't be here. We are pleased and honored to have it. It's probably not many times that property owner groups stand before you and ask you to help us have the ability to assess ourselves for additional taxation, really, beyond our property taxes and the others that we pay. So hopefully, we are making a positive impact. I think that with what we see, we believe we have and continue to do so, and that we forged what I believe is a very good partnership between us as property owners and you as the city council. And we appreciate it very much, and thank you very much.
All right. I also think we wanted to have Melanie from Savitas to come down and give us, make a few remarks. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. We are thrilled to be here today. This is the end of a year-long road to renew this district. What we are asking today is that you conduct the public hearing, take any public testimony. After that, we will adjourn to count the ballots. When we return with the ballots, which we believe will be favorable, we would ask that you approve the renewal of the P-Bid. In your motion, we would ask for one minor administrative clarification to the management plan and the resolution, simply to note that the square footage in buildings, that is basements, is not assessed. That is not a change, it's simply an administrative oversight that the text was not included originally. Are there any questions?
There may be, but we're gonna take the item out to the public first and listen to public comment. Does this conclude the staff report? All right. We'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, do we have someone? No, okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. We have Councilmember Soria. I'm sorry? Oh, I do. My apologies. I actually do have cards up here. I totally missed that. My dear friend, Councilmember Capriolio, always wants me to move very quickly, so let me, I'll call you in order that I have you. I have Dan Doyle, my apologies.
Thank you, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'll try to be quick as well. I, like Tom Richards, am involved in business in our community. I'm the chairman of the Board of Central Valley Community Bank, the largest community bank in the Central Valley, and secondly, also on the executive board of the Downtown Fresno Partnership. I know you all have been very supportive, and we appreciate your support for this ongoing process. We have an important task, which is the voting. The nice thing about the P-Bids is there's a sunset clause, so those that self-assess themselves get the opportunity on the scheduled basis, every five to seven years, to decide whether it has value or not. Just because maybe some of you may not have all the history that I have with it, I was involved with the very first P-Bid in California, in Sacramento, in 1994. The Assembly of California had to change and establish a law to allow for P-Bids, so it had to go through that process first to establish the ability to have P-Bids. So in 1994, there were zero P-Bids until Sacramento was the very first one. Today, there's over 200 P-Bids in the state of California. At that time, across the country, there were about 500 P-Bids. Now, there's about 2,000 P-Bids. They've been pretty successful, I would say. The key is, in my opinion, is it's not a magic bullet, it's here to help revitalize our communities and make a better place for our citizens to live and work, to create property values, and a great environment for our cities. The thing I would like to share, though, is it is a growing process, and I'll use Sacramento as an example. Their first year where we went to vote, there was a 72% approval rate. Five years later, it was 80%. Their last vote was 92%. So in our case, we had a 66%, I think, approval rate this, last year, the first year. So we're anticipating favorable results, and I think as we get better, stronger, and you can see more of what the bid can do for our community, our belief is that will continue like every other bid in California that has continued to grow and prosper. So thank you again for your support, and we believe this is one of the important tools to really help the economic development of our community. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Robert Gerfield.
Thank you, members of the council. I'm a property owner at Fulton Mariposa Malls. I have nine merchants in my buildings, tenants, and they've told me that they've benefited from the presence of the P-Bid in terms of reduced harassment by vagrants, reduced reduction in shoplifting, more customers that have come through because the area is cleaner and more attractive. And I want to see the work of the P-Bid continue. I thank you for your support. And I want to touch on just one other feedback that they tell me, and that is, the downtown mall is well-known throughout the community, and when there's a product that people want to buy, they come from all over this part of the Central Valley. And one of the things that's a bargain, if you will, that people come for are dresses for commencements, proms, weddings, parties in the spring. And I think through the activity of the merchants and through the P-Bid, we can get other services and products that will draw people. And if it gets known that we have these things available at attractive prices, people will come and use the downtown in the way that it was originally designed and intended to do. I want to give you one final thing. My tenants are all immigrants from Korea, Cambodia, Laos, Mexico, and they work 24/7. They send their kids to college, several are graduating from medical school in the next two years, and I support them, I heartily recommend that we all support them and commend their efforts, and I want to thank you for supporting the P-Bid.
Next, we have Tom Etheridge.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Etheridge. I'm a property owner on Van Ness. I own about 2/3 of a city block. And me personally, I have found no benefit from P-Bid. I have not seen my vagrants go down, I've seen it gone up. I've watched pots, plants, everything taken out of in front of our street, our buildings, transferred to other areas, and I'm across the street from the mall, and it has not benefited me, not at all. And I noticed, when we voted for this, it wasn't to be a tax, and immediately, first thing out of their mouth was that we accepted this tax. And it's on my property tax bill, every month, every year, $5,000. And, I mean, that's $20,000, and so far, I have seen no improvement on my side of the street. I've seen things removed, taken out. I look across the street, I've seen all those plants and stuff removed from over there. You know, I don't see any benefit from it at all. I have less police protection than I had before. They may be on the mall, I don't know, but my understanding is they're turning the mall out. When we voted for this before, it was to improve the mall. If they're not gonna have the mall, we shouldn't be paying for it. And, you know, I don't know, you know, what people say or see that they're getting out of this, but it would be interesting to see. I've had the P-Bid employees come into my place of business twice. Both times they came in, I asked them what their job was. They couldn't answer me, and they left. Now, I'm buying shirts, radios, jackets, hats for all these people, and they don't even know what they're doing. They walk the streets, about half of them, and just try to hide. I mean, I don't mind paying for something if I'm gonna benefit, but if I'm not benefiting, then I don't like paying for it as a property owner, and I don't like being forced to pay for it when so many other places are exempt. And that's pretty much what I have to say about the P-Bid. Thank you.
Next, we have Michelle Tutellian.
Good afternoon, Michelle Tutellian, Civic Center Square. We've been, as many of you know, proponents of downtown, downtown redevelopment for many, many years, and I believe, I was also on the, have been on the board, I'm still on the board with the P-Bid, and believe that it is providing a catalyst and a body to really focus on a lot of the smaller things that need to be accomplished to take us to the next level. I have seen a tremendous difference over the last four years, both in safety, cleanliness, and all those other items that I think are quite visible, so I would ask that all of you please support renewing the bid for another seven-year period, and that's it. So, thank you.
Next, we have Savak Kachidurian.
Good afternoon, council members, Council's President. My name is Savak Kachidurian, 1060 Fulton Mall. I was introduced to the Fresno Partnership a couple of years ago, and I was very interested, and I saw what kind of work they do, and I was really amazed, the quality of work they do, and I decided to be a part of it. So it's been, I've been on the board for the past two years, and this year, I'm the co-chair, and I'm very happy about the results, and I've seen a lot of the change for the last couple of years. I own, last time I checked, I own about 350,000 square feet on the Fulton Mall, and depending on your decision, hopefully those numbers will grow. So please support the Downtown Fresno Partnership. Thank you very much.
All right, those are all the cards I have. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll return to, bring it back to the dais. So, council, this is how we're going to conduct the rest of the hearing. It's the first time that I personally have sat, have gone through this process. So we are now going to take a short break from this item to allow the clerk to count the votes. The clerk then will bring back us the vote count, she will announce that vote, and then we will then deliberate the item, and then we will vote. Did I have that right, City Attorney?
Yes, that's correct, and for the record, where the ballots are being counted should be open to the public, so the public could observe should they choose to.
Okay. Do we want to make an announcement on where that's gonna occur?
It'll be counted in the city clerk's office conference room.
Okay. How long do we think before we will come back, in case members of the public want to come back and hear the announcement?
Probably about 15 to 20 minutes.
Okay. So we have about 15 or 20 minutes, and they will finish counting the ballots, then we will come back, council, and finish deliberating this item, and then we'll vote. All right, so we're gonna, this item alone will stand in recess until the clerk finishes the count. Oh, council, let me just explain really quick. A lot of ballots have been turned in, but until this moment, people can still turn in ballots, so we're still receiving ballots, which is why we gotta get a final count. No, no, she gonna come back. So, okay, this item will stand in to recess, and we're gonna move on now to Item 2A on our agenda.
Council, just for the record, to be very clear, the public record, the public comment period is closed, and no more ballots may be received.
Public comment period is closed, and no more ballots may be received. All right, council, we're gonna move on to Item 2A on our agenda.
Good afternoon, council. Brian Russell.
Brian Russell, Department of Public Works.
I'm going to announce it really quick.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. We're going to award a requirements contract to Safeway Sign Company of Adelanto, California in the amount of $625,465.21 for traffic name signs and reflective sheeting materials. Staff?
My turn. All right. Item before you today is to award a requirements contract for traffic, street name signs, and reflective sheeting materials. These are products and materials that are used for citywide traffic sign repair and maintenance. There were three responsive and responsible bidders. Safeway Sign Company was the low bidder. Safeway Sign was the previous vendor, and their bid reflects a 3.6% reduction from the previous signed contract. The purchase of these materials are funded with state gas tax funding that is programmed in the Public Works budget. Local preference was not implemented because of state gas tax funding. Staff recommends that council award a requirements contract in the amount of $625,465.21 to Safeway Sign Company of Adelanto, California, and to authorize the Public Works Director or designee to sign the contract in behalf of the city. Available for any questions.
All right, thank you. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? All right, so move by.
Brian? I notice the, okay, the second lowest bidder was a local person?
Yes, sir.
And did, do we give them any preference on signage?
Because of the type of funding, which is state gas tax funding, local preference wouldn't apply in this scenario.
Local preference?
Would not apply.
Would not apply?
Correct.
But we still don't do anything about it?
That's what the purchasing in the attorney office determined.
My usual comments of keep the money local and spend it local and... I don't know, it just seems that, I mean, it's not that, that, it's what, 40,000? Approximately $40,000 difference? There, so, I mean, even if there isn't any local preference allowed, there's nothing that we look at for ourselves as our purchasing department that says, well, we can work with them a little bit more, some are, you know, credits for having local company?
You know, I'd have to look to purchasing to comment on that aspect. I don't know if anybody's here today from purchasing.
Hi, council members. Gary Wadahera, purchasing manager. For this particular job, it was funded by state funding, so local preference was not applied. Due to it being a bid, we can't really add any other factors that could make the local bidder the lowest bidder. And they would have to have been, the first lowest bidder would have had to have done something that would have deemed them non-responsive.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The lowest bidder to not award would have had to have done something that would have deemed them non-responsive, like take exception to our contracts, exception to our specifications, and...
So, because, okay, then basically, it's because of the monies that we're using from the state, we, I mean, they have their rules and regs, and there's nothing we can do about it anyway?
Yes.
Since we're using, okay. That's what I need to clarify.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. But I do have a question, the City Attorney. City Attorney? Councilmember Brand, I'm sorry, I have a question, the City Attorney, about this item. Does, just in line of Councilmember Quintero's questioning, with this being state funds, are we prohibited from using anyone other than the lowest bidder on state funds?
That's correct. Under our charter, we have to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder unless there is a local preference exception, and the local preference exception can't apply for the state funds.
So, that's a charter issue we have?
It's a state law issue in combination with the charter.
So, if we changed our, we changed our charter to something different, would we have more flexibility, or would it still?
We wouldn't have flexibility when it comes to state or federal funds.
But we would with our own funding?
That's correct.
Okay. Then maybe we should talk about that. Very good. Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. We'll move on to item 2B. Actions pertaining to the Shields Avenue Intelligent Transportation System Wireless Traffic Signals Synchronization Project from West Avenue to Chestnut Avenue. Staff?
Councilmembers Laun, Guneord, Design Services Manager, Public Works Development, Capital Management Division. Item before you pertains to the Shields Avenue Intelligent Traffic Transportation Wireless Traffic Signals Synchronization Project from West Avenue to Chestnut Avenue. Bid file number 3316. It's in Council District 1, 4, 7, and the Fresno County. Staff recommends that the council adopt the finding of category exemption per staff determination pursuant to section 15301(c) of the Sequoia Guidelines and award a construction contract with Creston Electrical and Data Incorporated of Irvineville, California in the amount of $731,034 as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the Shields Avenue IDS Wireless Project from West Avenue to Chestnut Avenue, and authorize the Public Works Director or designee to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, it's Council Districts 1, 4, and 7, so we'll go to Councilmember Capri Eleo. All right, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0. Councilmember Olivier absent. Moving on to item 2C. Approval of amendment number 3 to the professional consultant agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers for an amount not to exceed $7.1 million for fiscal year 2016. Staff?
Good afternoon, council. Mike Carvahal, Department of Public Utilities, Water Division. With this agenda item, city staff is requesting an amendment to the CH2M Hill Contract for Program Management Services for Year 3 Funding to the Water Division for providing the services to the Water Division. In October of 2013, city council approved the master agreement for three years with two optional one-year extensions with CH2M to provide program management services to support the Water Division's implementation of a five-year, $429 million water capital plan and development of a project management delivery system. This initial, this initial approval provided year one funding at $6.9 million over nine months. During this period, the services were focused on program startup, and CH2M worked with city staff to review and validate the city's recommended capital projects, identified opportunities for cost savings, provided technical staff to support the current capital projects, and developed a project management delivery system. Year 2 funding was at $6.9 million over 11 months. During year 2, CH2M worked with city staff to implement the project management delivery system with approximately 90 active capital projects consistent with the Construction Management Act and the Enterprise Capital Management Citizen Oversight Act. These projects included heavy design management for the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility, the raw water pipelines, and the regional transmission mains, as well as the ongoing repair and replacement of existing wells and pipelines in existing neighborhoods. The repair and replacement projects are critical to maintain groundwater quantity and improving the groundwater quality, especially in the central and southeast portions of the city, where groundwater continues to be threatened by TCP contamination. Along with this effort, CH2M also supported the public outreach efforts and the development of the recently adopted five-year water rate plan. The Year 2 Recharge Fresno accomplishments include completing the 90% design for the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility, the $186 million state revolving fund loan is pending final review and approval, and we initiated contractor prequalification. For the Frank Kern Canal Pipeline, completed 90% design and advanced land acquisition environmental permitting. On the Kings River Pipeline, we completed the 30% schematic design and advanced the environmental permitting as well. On the regional transmission mains, completed the alignment and sizing optimization along with 30% schematic design. And just like last week, council awarded the final design contract at $2.8 million to a local firm, Blair Church &amp; Flynn. The downtown 3 million gallon water storage tank, $10 million project was initiated for construction last year, so down on H Street, that project is underway, and it's starting to get off the ground at this time. With the Year 2 activity nearly complete, staff is now asking the city council to consider the third-year amendment for services during fiscal year 2016. During year 3, CH2M will continue to work with city staff utilizing the project management delivery system to successfully deliver the Recharge Fresno program on time and on budget, and to follow through on our commitment that these projects will do what we promised that they will do. For the major projects, the focus will be on project management, earned value management, risk management, as well as permitting to ensure that these projects are ready for construction. As currently scheduled, two large capital projects will be bid for construction during fiscal year 2016. These projects are the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility, as well as the Frank Kern Raw Water Pipeline. The program team will continue to pursue alternative funding sources such as grants and the state revolving fund low-interest loan to reduce the overall cost of the program for our ratepayers. Heavy emphasis will also be placed on public outreach related to these projects to engage the public and inform them of the scope, the scale, the timing, so we understand their concerns, and we can reduce the overall impact of these projects to the community. Along with this construction activity, the repair and replacement projects will continue along with the final design of the regional transmission mains and the Kings River Pipeline in anticipation of bidding those projects for construction during fiscal year 2017. Staff has negotiated a fee of $7.1 million with CH2M for the Year 3 Program Management Services, and the amendment is ready for council's consideration. This concludes my presentation. I'll be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael, I've got a couple of questions. And thank you for, to you and Tommy for meeting with me this morning. And city manager, I'll tell you early on, Tommy took me out there in a truck and drove me the whole route, and made me get out in the middle of nowhere and almost drove off, leaving me out there, so, in a city truck.
No one do pressure as far as how you were going to vote?
Exactly. That's, he was gunning the car, too, when he was asking me. But I did have one question, Michael, is that on the project, the overall project, you know, I know you're looking at the growth and that type of thing for the, for the area and the benefits that it's going to have. Can you, can you tell me how, how this is going to benefit the existing residences and businesses in the area through the, you had mentioned something about a replacement and repair being a part of this project?
Right. So, part of the $429 million capital plan does include approximately $80 million in repair and replacement of existing wells and pipelines. So, so these are our facilities that are in our existing neighborhoods, that are serving our existing residents. That's the cost to continue to upgrade those facilities so we can continue service and maintain service levels.
And so, it's been, some of the, the work then that you'll be doing is work that we basically had to put off because we didn't have the monies at the time, or just kind of, wait until you get the money?
Right. Some of the, some of these projects were deferred, so deferred maintenance activities where we weren't funded at the proper level that would ensure timely replacement. So, we have $80 million, you know, that will allow us to step up our repair and replacement of those facilities. Not quite where we want to be at, but definitely an improvement over the program we have completed in the past.
And what, what amount did you mention earlier on that, repair and replacement?
Over the five-year capital plan, $80 million.
Eighty?
Eighty.
Eighty million on existing. Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Brand.
So, this is the, this is the third year making the allocation roughly about $7 million a year for CH2M?
That's correct. So, the first year was $6.9 million, and that was for the first nine months. So, that ran from October of 2013 through the end of July of 2014. In August of 2014, we brought back the Year 2 amendment, and that was for $6.9 million, and that ran 11 months. So, that will take us through the end of this month. And the third-year amendment that we're now requesting that council approve is for $7.1 million. So, when you look at the actual cost of the services per month, the cost of services per month are actually going down, because this $7.1 million will span the entire 2016 fiscal year.
So, what is the total? I forgot.
What's the total cost of the program?
Yeah, for the project management.
Well, for, it's negotiated each year based on the service level needs. So, so year 1, $6.9 million. That initial approval only took us through the end of July of 2014. At that point, we negotiated the services for Year 2. And then now, looking forward, based on where the projects are at, what level of effort needs to be done to move those projects forward, we've negotiated that fee at $7.1 million. We anticipate coming back next year for the Year 4 amendment. You know, and we expect, you know, $6.9 million, $7.1 million, that it's going to be in that range. So, overall, it's about, you know, looking at roughly $35 million over the five-year capital plan delivery, and that's within the industry standard for program management services.
We got setback one year. How did that affect the timing? You know, we delayed the original deal we approved. We had to rescind that and come back. So, any material change in the overall plans?
Actually, you know, the cost of program management services are in the actual projects. So, whether the city is providing those services with city staff, or we bring in the outside expertise, this is a cost that's driven by actually delivering the projects. So, that delay didn't really increase the overall cost of program management services, and we actually reduced the cost, the overall cost of the capital plan with the new rate plan.
So, you're going to do the, the two major projects, the 72-inch water line and the coming about 23 miles, and the surface water treatment plant, right? So, do you anticipate by year end, we'll award those contracts?
Yes, we do. By, for the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility, we anticipate issuing a notice to proceed to a contractor for that project before the end of calendar year 2015. The Frank Kern Canal Pipeline, same thing, before the end of the calendar year 2015. The regional transmission mains, as well as the Kings River Pipeline, that's a 72-inch diameter pipe, those we will not be awarding to a contractor until fiscal year 2017.
Okay. What is the timing on the bond issuances? It's just a lot of money starting to go out. What, when do you guys plan to incrementally bring them in this year and next year?
We do not plan to issue a bond in this current fiscal year. In 2016, we anticipate bringing forth the state revolving fund low-interest loan for the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility, and we are continuing to work with the state for SRF dollars for the Frank Kern Canal Pipeline. So, for those two projects, we are not anticipating, at this moment, bringing forward a bond issuance until we get, you know, once we get final approval from the state on whether they're going to issue this, and we feel really confident about their ability to issue us a low-interest loan.
Right. Any concern about the volatility on the rates by, you know, over the next couple of years? Is that program in?
It's, when the rate plan was prepared, there were some very conservative estimates as far as water consumption goes, and we continue to monitor that as we, we implement the 28% reduction in demand. And so far, we are, we are still, you know, still feel what we are on line, that our rate plan is still intact, and so we'll be able to move forward with these major projects.
It's basically, the less water we use, the higher the rates go, right?
That's correct.
So, that is, that was factored in the calculations, both for the long-term financing and as well as the rate?
Right. So, as, as the rate plan, you know, anticipated raising the rates, it also in, anticipated that there would be a reduction in demand, just that goes along with raising rates. And so, there were some conservative estimates there, and so we continue to monitor that.
Okay. Again, I appreciate all the work that went behind this, going back a couple of years. Has anybody made a motion yet?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion. We approve the item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. We have a second? All right, we have a second, my Councilmember Soria. All right, we have a second by Councilmember Soraya. I don't have any other questions up from councilmembers, so I'll make my final comments. Most of my questions were answered honestly when you guys came to the office the other day and then a couple of good questions out here. So I'll be supportive of this item today. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0.
Thank you.
We'll now go to item 2H, as Henry. Actions pertaining to the 2015 Community Orient Policing Services Cops Hiring Grant Program. Staff?
Thank you, Council President, for taking me out of order. The item that you have before you is to authorize the chief of police to apply for a grant from the cops office for the hiring of up to 15 police officers and to accept $1,875,000 from the cops office over that three-year period. The 15 police officers that would be applied for would serve as neighborhood-slash-school officers in some of our more challenged neighborhoods throughout the city of Fresno. And the grant provides a maximum of funding of $125,000 over that three-year period for the officers. The remaining portion would need to be funded by the city of Fresno as well as we have already been in conversation with Fresno Unified School District to get them to partner with us in paying 50% of that match. The program would be administered similar to what we have at Fort Miller on the Dakota Quarter just west of Blackstone, where the officer is not only on that campus but in that neighborhood, being responsive to some of the needs that are in that particular neighborhood, whether it's gangs or drugs or blighted condition. And the other thing that the officers will be involved in is youth activities, after-school programs within that neighborhood and overall just improving the quality of life. Again, the fiscal impact is, for the city of Fresno, would be $1,288,382 over that 36-month period. And so with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thanks, Chief. We'll take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Soraya.
Good afternoon, Chief. I just have a couple of questions. Just to understand the program that this grant will allow us to do, is it similar to former fiscal years? Are we expanding the program?
The grant, should we be awarded this grant? It would be available, the grant funds would be available October 1st of 2015. So there would be partial funding required in fiscal year 16. However, there would be some delays in hiring, so there would be minimal impact in FY16. The... That grant would then run three years from that period of time and there is a, within the grant requirement, a retention period of those 15 officers for a one-year period. The anticipated plan is again for us to retain the officers and partner with Fresno Unified during that time as well.
And let me, if I could, Councilmember, let me add, when we did our five-year projection, it's a little bit different than what we've done in the past with public safety grants. We assume that when this grant expires that we will absorb 100% of that cost. We've done that in the last couple of years with FIRE with safer grants. And so in this case, we looked at the five-year to make sure that once the grant is gone, we can sustain this level of service after the fact.
Thank you.
That's correct.
And so just to clarify, so I guess my, maybe, I don't know, you misunderstood the question. In terms of the program and the coverage, have we had a similar type of program with Fresno Unified? Because that's my understanding that we do currently have some type of partnership. Is that correct?
Currently, the program we have with Fresno Unified as well as Central Unified and Fresno County Office of Education is that they fund the police officers to be on the high school campuses only. The funding for Fresno Unified is those officers are funded at 75%. That covers 75% of the school year. During the summer months, when school is out, those officers become available to us to be a part of patrolling our patrol force. The other partnership that we have with Central Unified is 100% funding and that is that they have access to that officer year-round. The only other program that is similar to this is one that we implemented this year along the Dakota Quarter where the, we have a partnership with them in the fact that they fund 75% of the officer and we utilize that officer not only on the campus but in that surrounding neighborhood. I don't believe you can separate the school from the neighborhood and it's important that we impact those neighborhoods, especially where there's multi-housing units nearby. So it'd be similar to what we have today at Fort Miller School, which we recently implemented about four months ago.
Right. And then I know that Bruce just clarified that we've made projections, the five-year projections does include the potential cost if we don't get the grant. So within our, the proposed budget, would there be cost savings if we get the grant? Or are we anticipating within the proposed budget?
No, let me clarify. The budget assumes that we're going to get the grant. It's the impact on future budget years that we are making assumptions that within three years, we will have to bear 100% of the cost of these additional positions. In the past, as an organization, we've gone out and acquired grants to fund officer positions and in the case firefighters, with no consideration as to what the future impact was going to be. In this case, we've done that over about five years. So our commitment has been to both the police as well as FIRE is that if we go pursue grants to augment staff or increase staff, we're only going to do it if we have the ability to sustain it in the long run. So that's what I meant by that.
But I guess my question is just for this next fiscal year. Is it programmed in the budget that we're receiving the grant?
Yes.
Okay. And so we're pretty confident we're going to get the grant? Is that...
We, there was actually two grants. One grant was the burn grant that we had applied for. We're not confident we're going to get that because they're only going to award three of those across the nation. This grant is better for us as a city. The other grant had a research project involved where a significant amount of that money went to a research institution. This grant is not as competitive as the burn grant. So when you say confident, I believe we have a very good chance of getting this grant based on our past history with the cops office as well as some relationships that I believe our mayor has in Washington.
Okay, great. So assuming we don't get the grant, I'm supportive of the program. I think it's a great thing because I think that it'll really strengthen the relationship with the community and really work in partnership with the schools. So I think it's great. But I'm just curious, if we don't get the grant, have we planned to try to ensure that the program moves forward or...
No. If we don't get the grant, then it'll be more of a mid-year discussion about whether or not we want to commit additional general fund to positions, public safety positions in the department.
And that would be the 1 point, the, what was, oh, the 1.8? That's what we would have to figure out if we would commit to it if we don't get the grant.
If we do not get this grant, then we would have to go back and figure it out, figure out at some point how we would want to pursue this type of a concept, whether it's 15 officers or five officers. If the city, the manager administration felt that this was important to go forward with, then we'd have to come back to council for that, to add additional officers.
And so the officers during the summer would be freed up? Is that the case or how would that operate?
When the school is out, they would be freed up for that neighborhood.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Brando.
Good afternoon, Chief. All right, the 35, so the grant's going to pay for 35% of the police officer salary and then the 65% is split between the city and the school district?
Yeah, I believe the grant pays for 30%, which is $1,875 over that three-year period.
And so 70% for...
Would be between the city of Fresno general fund as well as Fresno Unified.
And then what's that blend? What's that percentage?
The total for the general fund would be, over that three-year period, be a $1,288. So it'd be about a 30% from the federal government and then the remaining 70% split between Fresno Unified as well as the city of Fresno.
Is that half and half on the remaining 70%?
Correct.
Oh, okay. So it's about a 50% split between the city and the school districts. And you've been mentioning Fresno Unified. Are any of our other unified school districts involved in this program at all?
I have not approached any other school districts. That's not to say we couldn't. But I have approached Fresno Unified early on with the potential for these types of grants and they have set aside in their budget a dollar amount for this coming year. But I've not done that with Central Unified.
Okay.
Which would be really the, well, Clovis could as well, but I have not approached. But Clovis has their own police department, school police department, so generally they do not.
And so are Clovis officers, would they respond at school situations inside the city of Fresno?
Yes, they do. They're campus police officers. Yes, they do.
Yes, that, okay. So Clovis is kind of out of the equation. Maybe you or the city manager could ask, have we ever connected with Central Unified? Have they expressed the need for this or not? We haven't heard anything from them?
I have not and that would not preclude us from at some point, if we do get this grant, to perhaps say if we wanted all 15 officers, maybe 13 of them were Fresno Unified and two were Central Unified and we approach them with the same deal. And I could do that at some point.
All right. I'll talk with Councilmember Soraya. We've got Central Unified in our districts and maybe we can...
And we already have two Central Unified officers that they fund on their campuses today.
And do they fund those two 100% or are they working with a previous grant or...
They fund those at 100%.
Okay. All right then. And then Councilmember Soraya's question's kind of answered a few of mine. I guess I'll ask one a slightly different way. So whenever, so these officers have the ability to respond to any regular policing need throughout the day? If they, or does it have to be on the campus or in the neighborhood? Could it be across town or...
It could be. And the way that we set up any and all of these contracts, whether it's with the school districts or even the one we just are in the process of doing or with fax officers or with sanitation officers we're going to put in this coming fiscal year, if there is a pressing need, an emergency call where that officer is needed, they're going to respond. The contract is secondary to that emergency.
Fantastic. Thanks a lot, Chief.
You bet.
Councilmember Quintero.
Chief, and maybe the city manager might answer this one. It's related and unrelated. A few years ago during budget, we were really on some, money was really, really tight. And I remember that went through quite a few layoffs. One of the things that I recall that was done was that there was some folks in the office and PD that were laid off and they had to be replaced by patrol officers. And is that kind of been worked out now to where they're...
Well, I think a couple of comments. I'll let the chief elaborate. That was probably at a time where we were at, what, chief, 840, 830 officers. We're down to 700. So I don't think he has the ability to staff, which is again an issue with non-sworn. But my understanding is everybody and anybody that can is on patrol. They're not necessarily in the office. There's overtime and callback. And so when we were doing that, I think that was back at the day when we had a higher level of officers, we're not, we don't have that luxury or at least not the same level of luxury that we had a couple of years ago. Well, let the chief expand on that further.
The goal for us is to try to get more uniformed officers out in the field. The preference is to get those uniformed officers into patrol responding to calls for service or in a position where they're reducing the calls for service for our patrol officers. Because our patrol officers at this present time are call-to-call, very, very busy. So the more uniform presence out in the field today, the better we are in terms of reducing that workload and expediting our response. I'm not sure if I answered your question. No?
But, but chief...
Now, are you talking about the shifting of police officers when we laid off civilians?
Yes, we laid, you had to, I mean, there was just no choice.
We did. There were certain duties in the police department that we utilized. And there's probably today, I can think of maybe four positions that we have in the police department that if we had maybe three now civilian positions where police officers are doing kind of a combination of patrol stuff and civilian things.
So you've got part-time in the office and part-time on patrol?
Well, part-time doing sworn duties, sworn police officer duties.
Yes.
And then part-time doing the, some of the civilian things that take them away from it. The administrative tasks. I don't want to say civilian.
Right.
Administrative tasks.
Okay. And that's about three of them, you said, three or four?
Probably. We have somebody in our management support that at some point you have an item today that that person will be able to transition out of that unit and into patrol. And I can't think offhand. There may be a couple of others that we could look at.
All right. I was wondering what happened to them. Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Chief, at the end of three years and the grant is gone, then would that cost be shared with Fresno Unified as well as the city of Fresno?
That is the plan, but for assumptions in the five-year plan, it has been built into simply us absorbing the cost. But the plan would be for Fresno Unified to continue with that partnership.
Any reason to believe they would not continue with the partnership?
Not at this present time. They understand how that works. We've had grants with them before for school resource officers where we've partnered with and then after the grant period, they've assumed that. And as long as they have enough notice to build their budget based on that, they're okay.
Good. And if for some reason they choose not to continue the grant, then the services provided by that law enforcement officer would become generic and that it would fold into the city?
Absolutely right. 100%. Use them how we want.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, those are pretty be all the questions. I don't really have anything to add. I think most of the general questions, most of the general questions that I had were answered. So do we have a motion? I don't remember anyone making a motion. We have a motion by Councilmember Quintero, second by Councilmember Olivier. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Brand absent. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Well, now I'll come back to item 2D. Award a contract to Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC for the procurement of one 3,000-gallon aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle for the Fresno United International Airport. Staff?
Council President, Council Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation, good afternoon. All commercial airports have what's called an aircraft rescue and firefighting function and our airport is no different and it's a function that is specialized in responding to aircraft incidents as compared to our fire department, which responds to structure fires and other types of responses. The vehicle before you for purchase is specifically designed for aircraft use and it replaces a vehicle that's about 22 years old. So we're past our useful life and it's time and the FAA has provided the funding. So we're before you to purchase this vehicle and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll take this out to the community. Anyone in the community wish to come forward and speak on this issue? No one moving toward the mic. Then we'll bring it back to the dais.
Councilmember, well, first it's Councilmember Capriolio's district and Councilmember Brando's.
Roach it to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Councilmember Brando.
Thanks for that report. What do we, what do we do with the old, the vehicle that's being replaced? Is it something we use for backup and still keep in circulation? Do we sell it off to another municipality or what do we do with that?
In 2007, we had bought a new vehicle to replace an even older one and we put it on the market and that older one back in 2007 was purchased by another airport, I believe, back in Florida. So we put that out. It's expensive to keep these vehicles maintained.
Yeah.
We don't need three, obviously, and so we shed that expense by selling it on the market. And usually there's... the market. And usually there's smaller airports that'll grab these things up.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of hoping. So we will realize a value, whatever that is, for that, for that third vehicle that's being replaced?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Could you just let us know when that happens?
I will do that, yes.
Thanks, Kevin.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes seven zero. Next we move on to item two E, actions pertaining to Olive Gardens and Van Ness Extension Water Main Replacements and Transfer Pump Station. Your staffer for that?
Good afternoon, Council Jim Paulsgrove, Public Works Department. The city of Fresno seeks to replace water distribution mains and water services in the Olive Gardens and Van Ness Extension areas, as well as relocating and reconnecting onsite water services. The city will also install a new raw water transmission main between pump station two oh one and pump station thirty-six to facilitate water treatment. Four bid proposals were received and open on May twenty-seventh. West Valley Construction submitted the low bid in the amount of one million five hundred forty-five thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars, and is considered the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the finding of categorical exemption per staff determination pursuant to Class One Section fifteen three oh one B and Class Three Section fifteen three oh three D of the SEQUA guidelines, and also award the construction contract in the amount of one million five hundred forty-five thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars to West Valley Construction as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder and authorize the Public Works Director or his designee to sign and execute the contract on behalf of the city. That concludes my presentation, I'll be available for questions.
Will now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais, Councilmember Brandow.
Hey Jim, I've got a couple of questions for you. Great, great presentation, just a couple of questions. So this is in District Two, and what is the timeframe, if we pass this today, which I'm going to recommend that we do, what is the timeframe we're looking for, and is there disruption to the community, and what would, what could we expect on that?
First of all, the disruption on a project like this, kept to a minimum. There will be some disruption, but it's always kept to a minimum. And by the time you get the contracts in place and get the pre-construction meetings and all that, it'll take a couple of months to actually get ground broke.
Couple of months to get the ground broke, and then what, then what about the timeframe for completing the work once we start it?
I think, I believe this is a hundred and eighty-day contract.
Wow, okay. So it's gonna, so folks are gonna be inconvenienced for a little-
We've got three different areas of town that are being impacted here.
Okay. And then do we notify those citizens that might be impacted, or?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay. Could you, when that notification goes out, could you verify that with me so that I'm able to respond to folks when they call with questions?
Will do.
Thanks a lot, Jim. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes seven zero. Next we'll move on to item two G, Ms. George, Approver Workers' Compensation Alternative Dispute Prevention and Resolution Agreement between the city and units four and nine represented by the FPOA. Staff?
Good afternoon, Council President and members of the council, Jeff Cardell, Director of Personnel Services. We are pleased to report, as a follow-up to our workshop on April thirtieth, excuse me, regarding an alternate dispute resolution with the FPOA, that we have reached agreement. And here today, we do have Jackie Parks, he is the president of the Fresno Police Officers Association, along with our legal representative, should you have any questions for them as well. But we are here seeking your approval of the alternate dispute resolution agreement, which would be also known as a carve-out for the workers' compensation program. In addition to that, there's a corresponding savings agreement. In the ADR agreement, we've identified that we will be sharing the savings attached to this program, net of expenses, with FPOA, fifty-fifty. Collectively, the FPOA and the city staff believe that the ADR program will provide timely and effective delivery of care, reduce the length of light duty or lost workdays, provide more expeditious claim resolution, and will result in a reduction in liabilities and expenses. Essentially a win-win. The agreement is to be in effect for at least one year, and may be terminated with sixty days' notice. We would hope that the program, as it's designed, will prove fruitful and beneficial, and that we will want to continue to extend. The program does include a joint committee that oversees the program on a regular basis. It also is comprised of an ombuds person, a nurse advocate, mediator, and arbitrator. There are a few minor changes to the documents that you have been provided. The city attorney's office has called out that we didn't prepare the signature block correctly, and some other minor formatting changes in terms of page numbering and the like. We've reviewed all those changes with the FPOA, they're in agreement. And so we ask that you provide your approval of the respective agreements today, and authorize the city manager to execute them, so that we can in turn forward these documents to the state for final approval, so that we can make this program effective and useful and meaningful for the city, for the members of FPOA, and for your respective constituents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Will now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Come on down, state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes. And now you have here, Jackie.
Good afternoon, Jackie Parks, President for the Fresno Police Officers Association. Apologize for my attire, I normally like to look a little better when I come and address you guys, but we're doing what we do best. We're involved in a couple of community events today, so we're out supporting our community and cooking, and we'll see you tonight at Home of Hope, we'll be cooking hot dogs out there this evening. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the council members who have reached out to us at the FPOA and expressed an interest in this program, and many of you had a passion for it, as we did, and as Mr. Cardell does. I want to thank the city, I want to thank Bruce for all the work that they've done to come to this agreement. As you can tell, it's a very complex document, it's not a simple program, and there are some other ADR programs, or carve-outs, however you would like to call it. Within public entities in California, there's two or three, but they're nothing near as complex as this one, and we believe it has a great opportunity to get our members back to work faster with quality health care, and we are looking forward to hopefully seeing some savings that everybody gets to enjoy. So I just want to thank all the council members for their interest, their passion. Bruce, thank you so much, you've been great on this. And Jeff, thank you and your staff as well. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais, Councilmember Brand.
Wanted to thank everybody involved in putting this together. I think it's, you know, I know in my own experience in workers' comp is very costly, very bureaucratic, and I think this is an innovative way to approach this on a, for the city wide. And how long, Jeff, do you think it would take to find out any results, how, a couple of years, as far as net savings?
We should be able to identify the first year, what our savings are projected to be by the, the program year is July first through June thirty. So June thirty of sixteen, we would have results by the end of the calendar year twenty sixteen.
Okay, so not that, not that long. And the success won't be measured just in cost, it's going to be shortening the length of a duration of a workers' comp claim, getting people back on the job quicker, which we may have, you know, seven hundred officers out there, but maybe at any given time have only six hundred available. So if that makes it go to six fifty under the same cost, I mean, that's a big win for the city of Fresno.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, thanks everybody, and Jackie and Damon particularly on this effort, and my partner, Steve Brandow. I'll make a motion when we approve this item.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Brandow.
I guess I would just like to add to Councilman Brand's comments, I also appreciate the work. We love win-wins in the city of Fresno. This seems like a win-win, we've got our fingers crossed. Jeff, I'd like to ask you one question, maybe. If somebody was watching on cable and they were trying to understand this, could you really boil it down and simplify it? I know it's complex, and your work on your end has been very complex, as well as FPOA have been doing a lot of work for months to get us to this point. But what does it do? How does it help our citizens?
In its simplest form, and it is a very condensed Reader's Digest version, in its very simplest form, what it does, it allows for a process which provides for resolution of complaints or issues or disputes, disputes whether they are in terms of the type of medical treatment that should be provided, in terms of the degree of disability somebody has, whether or not a particular service should be provided to a person who has claimed workers' compensation injury. It ensures that we have a process that is much more efficient, and what I mean by that, it addresses those issues sooner, rather than going through a drawn-out process where we have to schedule an appointment with a agreed medical examiner or qualified medical examiner, and most of those appointments are at a minimum six months in the future, with reports not being generated for another sixty days beyond that. Through this process, we will be able to have a panel of doctors who will commit to providing a much more timely evaluation, which if we are able to receive decisions from a qualified doctor that much sooner, then, so for the sake of argument, three months sooner, four months and a five months sooner, that means we're able to proceed and advance that claim that much sooner, rather than having a delay where we continue to have to pay either overtime, or we have somebody working in a light duty capacity, when if they were provided with the appropriate care in a timely fashion, we'd be having them back to work.
Yeah, so, and I appreciate, that's your, that's your simplified version. I'm going to bounce my simplified version off of you and see if this is somewhat accurate. If this program is as successful as we hope it will be, will it indeed get our officers back to work sooner, or get a resolution dealing with whatever injury they might face? So hypothetically, we process officers faster and get them either back on the job sooner or another resolution. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And then, this is about, I guess we could call it about a year-long pilot program, but sometimes these things really take a little bit of time to determine. So do you anticipate, would we know the results of this by the mid-year mark? Do you think we really won't know much for a full year? What are your thoughts?
I think that we will have some indication along the way, how well the program is working. The longer the period of time, the better understanding we have. We certainly could look at it at a six-month mark and determine, are we really accomplishing the objectives we set out to achieve? And if, and we should be doing that on a regular basis, not just waiting for six months. Once this program's in place, we all have a vested interest in ensuring its success. And if it's not successful, if there's some hurdle in accomplishing that success, we, through the joint committee, which includes three, three members from the FPOA, Mr. Parks, Mr. Kurtz, and Mr. Hall, along with myself, our risk manager Mike Payne, and Renee Wataheira from the police department, we should be removing whatever hurdles to the extent that we can to ensure that we're meeting those objectives. And if we find that those, those are hurdles that can't be overcome, then we need to be revisiting that, the program.
Okay. I don't want to add any work to your workload, but could you keep council informed about that? Maybe send us a memo, a quarterly or something, and keep us apprised of how that's moving forward. And then my final question is, of the fifty percent savings that the city could possibly gain from this, from this program, what would those monies, where would those monies end up? What could we use them for?
That would be subject to the city manager's office and the administration in conjunction with the council.
Does it go into the general fund, or?
They are general fund monies.
They are general fund dollars?
Correct.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Jeff, I appreciate it, and Jackie, and to your staff, you guys have been working hard for a long time. Bruce, we, I appreciate the city's openness to the whole idea and the concept. It's really interesting that Fresno has a chance to really take the lead in something across the state, and so hypothetically across the nation, it's kind of a new idea that's going to be tested, and I'm, we're all keeping our fingers crossed. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Soria.
I think that my council colleague just asked, I just wanted to ask about regular reporting. I think that with his request in terms of just letting us know if it's quarterly or every six months, in terms of the cost savings and the successes, if, you know, once we have enough time to really quantify those savings, I would really just like to see how the program is, is working, so.
I would submit that from a savings perspective, we're not, we would not be in a position to quantify to the nth degree until after the program year has been completed. We could identify along the way through the city manager's office, what sort of successes we're encountering in terms of being able to bring people back to work that much sooner, or to put them in a position to where they're receiving much more timely care. We can address those types of things over the course of the year, but in terms of actually translating that to ultimate dollar savings, that's going to be something that's actually determined by the, an actuary, the city's actuary.
And so you'd anticipate having, I guess, maybe with a longer period of time, we would be able to, be able to tell some of those savings. That's all I'm asking in terms of just wanting to ensure that, that we know of the success of the program.
Sure.
And-
Sure.
So that was pretty much all my questions. So thank you for the work that you guys have been doing, and I'll be supporting this today.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We don't have any other council members punched up. I'll make my real brief comments and just really echo the sentiment of my colleagues here. As I've learned being council president, everyone says everything, so there's no need to repeat it. So I completely agree, I appreciate Councilmember Brandow with asking you to kind of give us the Reader's Digest version, I think that's important for the public to hear that. Totally commend Bruce and staff and Jackie. Lee, definitely, I know you did a lot of, a lot of hard work on this, along with everyone else and Steve, so really good win. Jackie, did you want to add something further? Come on down, yeah, sure.
Sorry about that. I was sitting back and listening, and I heard Councilmember Brandow and Councilmember Soria's request about reporting, and I was going to make a suggestion on the reporting, because I think financially, it's going to be difficult to have any valuable information until after the full year, and then, because it does require a very convoluted actuarial process to make that determination. But I think there will be things that we will be able to see, perhaps on the employee side, with claims getting done faster. And we'll know from our members how the system is doing, we're going to be getting feedback. And we do have quarterly meetings with the city related to workers' comp. Now, that's all city employee groups, but perhaps to help the council and to help out staff, that if we are attending those quarterly meetings for the workers' comp, that we can highlight some of the information, good or bad, on the program, and then the minutes from our meetings that we do for workers' comp could get forwarded to the council members, and that might provide that updates that you're looking for on a quarterly basis.
Let me ask you this, Jackie, because I hear what you're saying, I wonder if this would be better for us. What if, what if there were just a list of key indicators developed over the next year, to just say, hey, these are the indicators we're looking for to see if the program's moving in the right direction? And maybe that's the kind of reporting we like to see in the interim, since we won't be able to quantify it financially. But I'm sure there are a few metrics that you guys have that can say, hey, this is how we know, this is what we anticipated would happen and with certain outcomes. So maybe that's more along the line of what we're looking for in the first year, and then going forward, we'd probably be able to quantify it easier.
Oh, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. So anyhow, I'll just finish up my remarks, and it sounds like we have a lot of agreement on this, this item. We have a motion by Councilmember Brand and a second by Councilmember Brandow. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes seven oh. Thank you, staff. All right, moving right along, we are now on item three A. It's a resolution in support of AB thirteen thirty-five Building Homes and Jobs Act. My wonderful chief of staff is going to take the staff report.
Good afternoon, council. Gregory Varfield, Chief of Staff, to Councilmember Baines. Attached is a resolution of support for AB thirteen thirty-five, also known as the Building Homes and Jobs Act. Now, we normally don't do a lot of support- Now, we normally don't do a lot of support of state legislation, but in light of a lot of the conversation that council has been having very frequently lately regarding the balance of affordable housing and jobs in our community through our consolidated plan exercise, as well as HUD, I mean, the Action Plan, and then in the fall, you'll be dealing with the housing element, we thought that this would be a great opportunity to bring forth a piece of legislation that just makes some common sense. And in AB 1335, you have a large number of folks from the building industry to many cities up and down this, the valley, who are in support of this piece of legislation. And we believe that it would provide the $700 million annually for affordable and rental ownership of housing and supportive housing, including emergency shelters and other housing needs, and could create up to 29,000 jobs in our state. And so, we ask that you respectfully support endorsing this measure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And just to add to that, I think that this is kind of one of those times, Greg said it was common sense, and I think that's probably the right term. It's one of those times where most people on various sides of the aisle of the issue are kind of lining up and supporting this. So, we'll take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Come on down, state your name and address for the record.
Afternoon, Council President, Members of City Council, Mike Prandini representing the Building Industry Association. We did submit a letter urging the City Council's support for this bill. This bill is very important to provide a secured and permanent financing source for any revenue bonds or allocation of funds to provide for low and moderate income housing assistance. So, we do fully support it at the local level. Our national, our state organization, California Building Industry Association, supports this measure, as does every chapter of the association within the state. And there are also numerous other organizations that do also support this measure. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brand.
Just a few questions. So, this assessment's between 75 and $225 fees. Now, it said it exempts commercial and residential transactions, so what else is left?
You can have quick claim deeds. In the general provisions of the bill on page, on page seven? No, yeah, at the top of page seven? No, sorry. On the top of page six, it goes through, but not limited to the following: a deed, a grant deed, a trustee's deed, a deed of trust, reconveyance, quick claim deed, fictitious deed of trust, assignment of deed of trust, request for notice of default, et cetera.
So, when a home is sold or refinanced, it's subject to the fee? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, that's existing homes, not just new homes, right?
Correct.
Okay. And again, so if, I'm trying to still get on exempting, I read the State Digest on it, it's exempting commercial and residential transactions. So, if I have a single-family house and I sell it, that's not subject to the tax?
My understanding, and I'll tell you to be honest with you, Councilmember Brand, this is really what I had the most difficult time wrapping my head around on this. I'm supportive of it because obviously there's great support throughout the state. But I did, I was never quite clear on that, but from what I understand, with Greg just read, those are all the transactions that would be subject to the additional fee, because they are not putting it on new home purchases or commercial purchases. It's really all the other transactions that occur with that. That's the way I understand it.
I know it's, I've seen it, but BIA supporting it, and I think-
The Apartment Association.
California Association of Realtors, I think, are supporting it.
As well as the California Apartment Association.
Yeah, so there's, you know, it's pretty broad support on it, which I really, is kind of a welcome change to Sacramento to get this. I know it has bipartisan support on it. In fact, there was a San Jose court case that was on the appeal, I think the California Supreme Court ruled that their policy of inclusionary housing was in fact constitutional, which I know the BIA opposed to it. So, maybe this, in a way, starts addressing the issue of, you know, finding affordable housing at, this is both housing and rentals and buyers both, or?
Correct. Yeah, and it's funny, you mentioned that court case that just came down Monday night, Tuesday, Tuesday-ish, because we'd already put this on the agenda, and that was the exact same thinking that we were having in the office, that this might help level that conversational debate that's out there by having this pool of money that could be available to help offset that.
Yeah, because basically that case said that if you're building a home track, say if it was a 15%, would have to either set aside for low income or the mitigation bank, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, again, thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's important that we have the discussion about housing, not just in our community, but also statewide. So, I do appreciate you bringing this. I'm trying to find who's opposed to it, and I can only find, thank you. Do you have a list of groups who, I mean, I know we have BIA in support, but I'm curious if you have a list of people who are in support and who are against?
It's in the staff.
Is it in the packet?
It's in the staff.
I missed it, because-
It's pretty extensive, though. But you can, we're welcome to take a look at it.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna let other councilmembers talk. So, real quickly, so the $75 fee on real estate transaction docs, real estate transaction excluding, this is critical for me to get my support. So, there will be a $75 fee on real estate transaction documents excluding commercial and excluding residential? So, I'm curious, who's paying for this?
Yeah, so that's kind of what we were just talking about with Councilmember Brand a moment ago. It's, in the staff report, it really lists, a list of transactions that would qualify for that, but it's not if you're buying a new house or a commercial property. So, it's more transactional events that happen with real estate.
Right. So, if you look at the bill at the bottom of page five and the top of page six of the actual text of the bill, it gives you all of those transactions.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna let somebody else punch in.
We're done talking about, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the item. It could die by way of, by lack of a second. All right, we have a second. All those in favor? All opposed?
No.
Who's no? Okay, so pass the five to two.
All right, thank you.
Councilmembers Brando and Olivier voting no. Thank you. All right, now we'll go to item 3B, approved designation of a councilmember as a voting delegate and two councilmembers as voting alternates for League of California Cities' Annual Business Meeting on Friday, October 2, 2015. And real quick, council, let me just put this in context. We have two members already, Councilmember Brando and Councilmember Capriolio, that are already our delegates. I believe Councilmember Brando is the main delegate, and Councilmember Capriolio is our alternate.
Correct, although he listens to me a lot.
It's my recommendation that, so long as those two councilmembers would like to stay on there, and there's not any objection, that we continue along that line. So, I'm gonna take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolio.
I would graciously accept that vote.
All right, Councilmember Soraya.
I just wanted to ask, how do you get in line to potentially be considered?
Well, you could be in line today if you wanted to have a spot. We would talk about it amongst ourselves.
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, which spot would you like to take?
Well, I would like to be involved in being a voting, one of the voting delegates.
Okay, really quickly, City Attorney, how many delegates are we allowed to have?
I believe the council has one delegate and one alternate. Anybody can attend the league, but those would be the voting delegates.
So, how do we generally make that determination? Do we just volunteer? Like, how did you guys come up with?
Generally, there are a couple councilmembers that desire to do this, and then those councilmembers that desire to do it, we usually elect them to do it. Then, we've really never had a conflict with that. Councilmember Brando?
Yeah, I would like to continue.
I would like to continue. An example is the next resolution that we're gonna talk about today is something that I specifically included for the League of Cities. I'm already scheduled to go to a couple of League of Cities events this year, and so I've been a solid participant ever since I've been named, and I just would love to continue that.
So, why don't we handle this this way? We have to do this annually, City Attorney? Is this an annual appointment?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Soraya, in light of the fact that Councilmember Brando already has some legislation that he's really involved with the California League of Cities, would you be open to potentially being on next year's contention for this?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, so I want to just make sure we take note of the conversation, that next year, obviously, Councilmember Soraya is interested in being the voting delegate. I think that we may be open to continuing on with our voting delegate as Councilmember Brando, because of where you are in this process, but next year, I think we certainly want to be able to open it up. So, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Councilmembers Brando and Capriolio as our delegate and alternate for this year's California League of Cities Annual Business Meeting. All right, and we have a second by Councilmember Soraya. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you. We'll now move on to item 3C, resolution declaring that the California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act is damaging to California cities. Councilmember Brando.
This is the item I just referenced, and I'm just gonna, instead of coming down and presenting from down there, I'm just gonna talk a little bit from up here on the dais. This is about, what this is really about, it's multifaceted, it's very common for the councilmembers, we know all about it. We all approach it from a different angle, but for the public, what it is, is the state of California has demanded that we put in recycling centers at certain locations within the city. They give us those parameters, we have to fulfill that by law. And the end result is, in a lot of cases, and probably you'll hear testimony from my fellow councilmembers on this, it impacts probably every district a little bit different, but the end result is, when we put in a recycling center at a grocery store, I can talk about the Save Mart on Herndon and Marx, there's a recycling center there, and I've gotten at least a half a dozen complaints. Now, sometimes they're ongoing complaints, so the same person calls over and over, but different people that complain, and I'm thinking about a lady today named Debbie, who I hear from quite often, and so I hope she's listening. So, what happens is, in the neighborhoods surrounding these recycling centers, there is a lot of folks, in order to take advantage of the recycling center, they go out into those neighborhoods and they strip the recycling bins clean of recyclables. A lot of times, they'll take a shopping cart, and they'll just go onto people's property, or they'll go onto the sidewalk, and they'll start dumping recyclables from the trash bin into the shopping cart, and then they take that shopping cart full of recyclables down to the recycle center. In District 2, and I believe in other districts, it's led for a lot of opportunity for crime that shouldn't be there. And I've heard from my fellow councilmembers, a lot of times, that when this is happening, if a garage door is open, people have wandered into garage doors, into garages and taken things, they've also gone through, or they've gone onto the lawn to take other products. It's allowed an opportunity that should never exist. For me, it's the law of unintended consequences. I think Sacramento felt that they were helping the city of Fresno and other Fresno, and other California cities, helping us recyclable, recycle. The truth is, the city of Fresno is in an award-winning position when it comes to our recyclables, especially being a charter city. What this resolution is about to me is to let Sacramento know that their game plan has backfired in the city of Fresno. So, I've addressed it to the city of Sacramento, and I've also included the League of Cities, because other cities around the state of California are experiencing this exact same law of unintended consequences. What my motion does today is sends that message and lets the state capital know that their cities are struggling with some of the stuff that they're handing to us. I'm not gonna read all of the whereas's. Usually, these resolutions, there's a lot of whereas. Whereas, I'll give you an example, whereas the city of Fresno is an award-winning recyclable city. Instead of reading all of those whereas's, I'm gonna read the final paragraph. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Fresno as follows. The city does oppose the California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act and believes it is damaging to California cities by causing crime and public nuisances in areas surrounding recycling centers, and interferes with the city's ability to freely regulate harmful businesses. And the state of California should amend the act to clarify it does not pre-exempt or preempt charter cities from freely regulating recycling centers. The city also urges the League of California Cities to support the efforts of the city of Fresno to amend the act to ensure charter cities are able to appropriately regulate these activities. And so, that's it in a nutshell. Like I said, we might hear from our other councilmembers how it impacts their districts. I would like to say it probably impacts a lot of districts even more than it does District 2. But even in North Fresno, we hear about problems of crime around our recycling centers. So, I'm done, council president, with my comments, and so I'm gonna make a motion to adopt this resolution.
All right, we'll now take the item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Quintero.
Councilmember Brando? The, in the resolution that you want to adopt, the one you just read?
Yes.
Okay, what happens after we adopt it? We send it to Sacramento, or what?
Well, Councilman Quintero, as we've discussed on several issues relating to this problem, it's kind of a step-by-step process. So, I think my resolution at first lets Sacramento hear from us, okay? And then, once we feel, once I feel and we feel like they've heard from us, then we are, then I feel like it's a step-by-step process, and we can look at other opportunities for the city of Fresno.
And I'm supportive. I'm just trying to understand the process of where we go from here. And I was checking with the city attorney, and usually those regulations or laws or whatever you want to call them, it's state assembly and state senate. And I just want to, you know, maybe for your consideration as well, is that maybe, should we adopt this resolution today that we notify our legislators from our area?
Yes.
Immediately, that this is where we're at, and what can you do to help us?
Yes, that's a very good idea.
Because then, they might be able to move it forward at that level and say, okay, this city of Fresno's, you know, they've got some big concerns, and they can, you know, maybe try to move or amend the existing laws or regulations that we're under. Because if, you know, my thoughts are, it's good that we do this, and like I said, I'm supportive, but I think we need to get that extra jump or extra step right off the bat to say, hey, here's how we feel, how can you, what can you do about it? We elected you guys.
That's a very, that's a very good idea. So, we will attach copies and send them to our local representatives, both to state senate and state assembly, and ask them, let them know that we're sending the resolution, and then ask for their help.
Yeah, see, and because in that way, they can, they'd be in contact with, you know, the council president or you as the one that brought it forward, you know, and keeping us updated on what they're doing, because, I mean, they're the ones that can make those changes for us, you know? I mean, I don't know if there's any legal things that the city attorney would-
No, council, that's really a policy issue, not a legal issue, but the suggestions you've made are good ones.
Do, city attorney, do I need- Do, county, city attorney, do I need to change anything on the resolution to make that happen? Or do, do I just send a copy? Or do we ask you to, the clerk, to send a copy to our local electeds?
I think it's fine as is, and I would follow through that way.
Then that's what we'll do. City clerk, if this passes, can you make a note to send it to all elected state representatives from, that impact the City of Fresno? Both state senate and state assembly? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just really quickly, I just wanted to make sure. City attorney, that direction, is that like an amendment to the motion? Or is it just given as direction?
No, I would treat it as direction in addition to the, in addition to the resolution itself.
Okay, great. Councilmember Capriolio?
Just adding to Councilmember Brandow's comments, when we were at the League of Cities, this was one of the specific areas that we wanted to address, and try to get a feel for the other cities and counties and how they felt about it, and what they were doing to resolve it. And I think, based upon that, this has come forward, and we're in a leadership position. And hopefully, we'll get some response from Sacramento Assembly and Senate in a very practical, reasonable, common sense way that will help us with these issues that permeate the entire city of Fresno, especially in District 4. And we've been dealing with this through many avenues of the city, but it's such a time-consuming issue, and we still are able to maintain the cutting edge of recycling in the entire state of California. So I think this is a great resolution, and we should proceed with it.
All right. Councilmember Brand?
Wanted to add my support. Obviously, everybody in this council has the same issues on this recycling. And I like Sal's suggestion, letting our legislators in on it. But really, this is this fundamentally, this question of, you know, who makes decisions at the local level or the state level? It's going on education, and it's gone on here for years at the city and the county level. And they passed unreasonable mandates, they don't provide any funding. No, I guess we did finally get $4 million a few, last week, after so many years, but I don't know if we could do anything more, city attorney, to really make our point, or maybe engage other cities and counties that have similar problems that we do. So I'm sure this is a statewide problem. Any suggestions, city attorney?
I believe this would be a good first step in engaging other cities and counties, and possibly the League of Cities would be good, too. There may be other remedies ultimately that we might take advantage of, but I think this is the best way to proceed initially.
Well, I suggest our members of the California delegation for the California League of Cities take up this issue and get broad support from it. Thank you.
Councilmember Soria?
I will say that I will agree with a number of the comments made by my colleagues in regards to just the issues that exist around the recycling centers. I know in my district, we also get a number of calls on a weekly basis regarding crime and just blight that does bring to the neighborhood. I am not sure if by just doing a resolution against the proposed, or the current law would be the solution. I understand in terms of the intent. I would be much more supportive of sitting down with our local legislators and trying to craft an amendment to the current law to see what are the things that would benefit and could help our neighborhoods in terms of addressing some of the challenges that we have. So I would be much more willing to do that, and I would be happy to try to set up a meeting with Assemblymember Henry Perea to see maybe if next year, in terms of the legislative, during the legislative session when it starts, we can potentially craft a solution to address some of the specific challenges that we face in our neighborhoods. So that's where I would feel much more comfortable with.
Councilmember Soria, actually, we're thinking along the same line. Okay, so like I had mentioned to Councilman Quintero, this is like a first step or a baby step to let folks know that we're struggling with this issue, and that we're serious about the struggle that we face with this issue. So we would be very happy to engage and have that meeting that you're talking about. So that would be like a second step, and there's possibly a third step or a fourth step beyond that. But I would like your support. We're trying to begin here, and just letting, letting folks know that we're struggling with this problem. And it's kind of unintended. We're not judging the motives, but the outcome is not being very successful for the City of Fresno.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and the screen is clear, and I'll make a couple of comments on this, this issue. So I just want to start off by saying that definitely conceptually, I'm supportive of what you, what we have here and what we're saying. There are a couple of things I want to say that we don't lose sight of in this, in this discussion. Certainly, what Councilmember Quintero said, and then, you know, to a larger extent, kind of what Councilmember Soria said, they were really kind of saying the same thing, that we need to engage our state legislators to, to begin to really address this issue. But at the same time, and while I agree with that, I agree with that pathway. But at the same time, there are things that we should be exploring here locally, too. So we need to make sure that our own land use policies are consistent with what outcomes we want as well. So I just want to make sure that as we move down this path, and you said it, Councilmember Brandow, and I completely agree, there'll be several steps in really getting down to the heart of the recycling center issue. So as the council has the opportunity to address the entire whole of the picture for our city, I hope we're committed to that, too. Doing what we need to do locally, as well as putting pressure on our statewide officials because it is, it is a twofold problem. There are, there are things we need to be doing here locally to address this as well, and we don't want to let ourselves off the hook either. So I can be supportive today of the concept because I think it's a great place to jump off in the discussion. And I think showing, demonstrating to the state our feelings is the right first move, as long as we're also committed to continuing going down that path and really getting where we want, meeting with our state legislators, and also addressing our own local land use policies that affect this. So with that, Councilmember Capriolio?
It just came to me that we're going to have a meeting with all the cities of the county of Fresno, and this might be a good topic to bring up at that time, and see if the other cities would want to participate with their own individual resolution, or we can do a joint resolution, or a Central Valley resolution. Just food for thought. I think that might be something worth exploring.
That's a great idea, Councilmember Capriolio. If the agenda's already been set for that meeting, however, if in fact there are open items that they allow us to bring up, then maybe our city, maybe us as a city could bring that up at that meeting. I think if we could get so strong valley support, that makes our discussion that much stronger with our representatives that represent us here in the valley. So I think that's an excellent idea. So with that, we have a motion, I think. We do. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. It was our second? Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 6-1 with Councilmember Soria voting no. Moving, actually, I think we have gone through our open session agenda, and now we have to come back to our P-bid item. Madam clerk, do we have anything to report?
We completed the count. The city clerk tabulated the assessment ballots amended and not withdrawn, and determined that the assessment represented by the assessment ballot submitted and not withdrawn in opposition to the proposed assessment did not exceed the assessment represented by ballot submitted and not withdrawn in favor of the proposed assessment. And the total percentage of yeses were 76.95, and the total percentage of no's was 23.05.
And I'm assuming that means that this passes?
Yes.
Okay. So council, according to the procedures with how we have to discuss this, we have now had the announcement of the vote, and it sounds like it passed 76% to 23%. Now we have the ability to have council deliberations since we have closed the public hearing. The remainder of the comments will reside here, and then we will vote after the council deliberation. So Councilmember Brandow?
Council president, for a few minutes while the results were being read, I was talking with the city attorney. So could you go over what, what were the results again?
The, and as I understand it, the count reflected 76% of the property owners voting yes, with 23% voting no.
76 in favor?
Yes.
And then, and then what are the procedures that you just mentioned we're going to go through?
So kind of, this is the first time I've had to do this. They only do it every seven years, but we had to have our public hearing, the presentation, the public hearing today. We closed the public hearing, and that stopped the voting. So then, they received all the ballots, they went back, and the clerk had to count the ballots in public. So that was occurring in our clerk's office. We came back, she announced the vote, and now that she's announced the vote, we then, we then deliberate, and then we will take a vote.
Okay, and then, did you, did I miss here, or do we go into closed session for this?
No.
No, we're just going to deliberate right here.
Right.
Beautiful. All right. I have a couple of questions then. Tom, could I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
And I'm very supportive of P-bid and the things that they're doing, and I, and I do believe that folks should be able to vote, to tax themselves. I mean, that, that's amazing, but sometimes in our society, we get to that spot. If you want to move something forward, this is a way of doing it. What percentage of the properties are City of Fresno owned in this process?
I don't know the percentage. Do you, Aaron? Just one second.
Okay. Because if I understand this process correctly, the City of Fresno's vote weighs really heavily.
I don't, depending upon its size, I would say that's probably true. I just, I don't know what they are percentage-wise. Just a second. She's going to need to do some math, which might take a couple of minutes.
Okay, all right. While we're doing that, I've got a whole, a whole different line of questions that I'll ask the city attorney. So thanks, Tom. So city attorney, there was a guy here earlier, Tom Etheridge, I believe his name was, I think he said 922 Van Ness Ave, and he felt like it wasn't working for him. And although it looks to me like the majority of people think that it is working for them. For a guy like Tom, is there any way of cutting him out of the process, or, you know, cutting him out so he doesn't have to participate if he doesn't want to?
This is governed by the California Streets and Highways Code. And at section 36624, a part of it says, "At the public hearing, the city council may only make changes in, to, or from the boundaries of the proposed property and business improvement district that will exclude territory that will not benefit from the proposed improvements, maintenance, and activities." In other words, the council would need to have evidence and make a finding that certain parcels, if you want to carve it out of the district, would not benefit from the district. And then the council could approve it with the amended boundaries.
Is his testimony of his experience not enough? I mean, to me, it's enough. I feel like he's been involved for four years or whatever, and...
I don't recall what his testimony was. That would be the council's purview to make that decision. As I understand it, though, his property is somewhat in the middle of the P-bid. So there would need to be something, I think, unique about his property to make a finding that he would not benefit from the P-bid.
Well, how, how do we go about doing that? I'd like to take his testimony as somebody who's been out there and paying into P-bid for four years, and you heard his comments. I'd like to take his testimony at face value and say that he would like to be cut out.
That's the council's decision? I can't offer my opinion on that?
Okay. All right, then. I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion, then, that we cut out for this guy's benefit, 922 Van Ness Avenue?
Cannot do it.
Cannot do it?
You can't cut one out of the vote.
Let me, let me, let me just rail us back in right here. If we could have someone approach the lectern and address Councilmember Brandow's questions.
Melanie Kottrell with Civitas. To answer your earlier question about the city, it's about 15% of the total budget. It's about $110,000.
Total votes?
Of the total budget, which is what the votes are. They're based, it's $1, one vote.
Oh, okay.
So the city is about 15%.
Okay, Melanie, so on that item, how many votes does the City of Fresno get to cast?
15%. 112,000 approximately, out of 720,000.
Is that, you have something to add to that?
The city has a ballot, and the ballot has the exact dollar amount. It's in a box in the city clerk's office.
Okay. Well, that, the whole attaching the dollar amount is really an odd way of looking at it, I guess, but, I mean, there's a, there's votes?
Yes, yes. This is standard in assessment district law. It is $1 equals one vote for every property owner. So a property owner that pays $100 has 100 votes.
Okay.
A property owner that pays $500 has 500.
Okay. Now I get it, now that you said that. So let me ask you this again. So you, now I'm going to ask you to repeat yourself. How, how many dollars or votes did the City of Fresno?
112,000, which is about 15% of the district.
15%. All right. Cool. Thank you. And then, and then on this other item, you wanted to approach and talk about that?
Yes. The P-bid law that we're forming or renewing this district under does allow council to remove parcels that will not benefit. So the basis here is really the question of, will this parcel benefit? If it's in the very middle of the district, where we are providing services up and down the street, and providing general marketing, and providing events, it is a very difficult argument to make that that parcel will in fact receive no benefit from those services provided around there. And in terms of providing the services, it would make it a little more difficult, as we would actually have to tell our people, ambassador, don't go service that parcel. Or, street sweepers, don't go service that parcel. We cannot pick up litter there, we cannot remove gum from the sidewalk, anything in front of that parcel.
Okay. So I understand, yeah, it's kind of a difficulty. So then, that, the whole part about being a benefit then really becomes real subjective. And so you're telling me the guy is getting benefited, and he's telling me that he's not getting benefited. So I'm just going to continue with my motion that we carve out this one. I mean, it can be legally done. So I'm going to make a motion that we carve out 922 Van Ness Avenue, and see what my fellow council members, which direction they go with that.
The, okay, we have a second. Councilmember Brand?
I remember going back to 2009 and the inception of the P-bid, and there were people back then that had issues with not wanting to join. And I know we made every effort back then to carve out logically, carve out the people that, that didn't want to participate. And, you know, this debate of downtown revitalization goes back 40, 50, really goes back to Fulton Mall. And what we've seen in really in the last, you know, six, seven years is a major, major effort by the mayor to regenerate, revitalize downtown. And I think that, although initially I had some doubts, I think the P-bid's been an important component of that effort to get, you know, the merchants themselves who are directly involved and directly affected to, you know, basically assess themselves. And I don't think you'll have a situation ever that you'll have an assessment district that everybody's going to agree to it. Most of the, like, infrastructure assessment districts and other ones typically require two-thirds vote, so you're going to get a supermajority of the people that'll support it. But, you know, I think you can measure success. I've seen this huge change in the last, you know, my time on the city council from the inception. And I think one of the best measures of success is rising property values, and I think we're seeing that right now. And I think the, really, the final touch in downtown is going to be, the final element will be the opening of the Fulton Mall, which I think will be a, over time, will be a very successful venture. You'll see property values rise dramatically around the area, and you'll see kind of a, a, what's the word I'm looking for? But you'll see, this would be basically lifting the areas adjoining around it. We've already seen the Cultural Arts District, very successful, and the high-speed train station, if it ever gets there, will be an important component, too. And that, I know there's a lot of stuff going on right there. You're adding all these together, and including the stadium, which we didn't really include good planning before, to me, all adds up to a very, you know, very positive effort towards revitalizing the heart of our city. So I'm very supportive of this... So, I'm very supportive of this P-Bid. And again, I've came a long way over the last six and a half years. Thank you.
Council member Olivier.
Thank you, council president. Hey, thank you, everyone, for coming here. I have been a supporter of downtown and I also have come a long way. I voted to support the P-Bid along with my colleagues. We voted 7-0 for that. I voted for the opening of the Fulton Mall. I'm really eager to be there when we break ground to do that. So, I'm excited about things that are happening downtown. The reason why I'm the second on council member Brandow's motion is because I received a letter from a property owner and it was also sent to Mr. Blair and also sent to Mr. Shartin. Are you familiar with William Bruce? Is there a way that we could carve him out? The reason why is because, I mean, I'm going to vote for this today. I'm going to support this today, but it shows here, you know, he says, "I have not received any value." He says, "I've requested that my property be exempted by whatever means you have available from the P-Bid assessment." So, I saw it as my duty to bring it forward here and at least have a discussion with my colleagues and also you as well. Is, is that something that we can do as well? Or, I mean, are you familiar with him? Is he in the middle? It says that he's on the outer edge. I've never met him. I have only received mail from him. And so, I'm curious to see if he's, is he receiving a benefit or can he be left out as well?
Aaron Blair. Yes, actually, he's in an interesting situation. He's actually received direct benefit to his particular building. The P-Bid has actually commissioned a mural on the side of his buildings probably two years ago in tune of several thousand dollars. So, actually, his assessment has been directly invested right on his actual building. So, to say he's not received anything is actually not true. I mean, he has a mural that we commissioned, which equals more than his assessment he's paid over the time. So, I do know him very well.
Okay. But there's, you don't recommend letting him out. You need his assessment.
I mean, I'm not here to make people's lives hard. I mean, just, you know, I'm, I'll just respond to his letter and say that, you know, he's had a direct benefit to his property where a lot of people don't have that directive of a benefit. And mainly, it's because his property is a gateway into that area. So, we wanted to make sure that we were supplying him with, you know, something nice for his property.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, I would like to add that address on to the motion. And I would also like to hear what my colleagues have to say about it, only because he seems very sincere and he seems very emphatic. And I understand that it's subjective. Some people say that he's receiving a benefit and others say that the guy in question here, Mr. Bruce, says he hasn't received one, but I think it would be fair to add that to the motion.
All right. Are you asking council member Brandow to amend his motion?
Yes.
Council member Brandow, are you going to amend your motion to include that property?
I'll amend my motion to include that property.
All right. I'm assuming the second is in agreement.
It's 1752 Van Ness.
All right. Council member, I'm sorry. You done, council member Olivier?
I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay. Council member Capriolio.
Thank you. Did he object to the bureau being on the side of his building? I'm wondering. Okay. Kind of a critical question, but...
He addresses it in his letter. I'm sure, I'm sure you've heard from him before. I can get you a copy of the letter if you'd like about the mural.
Thank you. It seems to me that you mentioned, someone mentioned ambassadors from the P-Bid. It comes to me in a form of better communication with all those that are involved. I know you want to be involved and you're active and you're with it. Others might not understand it or be with it. So, I think if, if you communicate with them, just a suggestion, generally, as to what's going on and where you're going, and then specifically, like with the pawn shop fellow, I think you mentioned it increases traffic downtown, you're cleaner, you're neater, better patrols. Maybe he knows that. I'm not sure. But it seems like if there, if we have better avenues of communication, it's, it just benefits everybody involved. He may not change his opinion, but at least he knows specifically what you folks are doing for him. So, just a matter of a suggestion to you guys and I would be supporting the first motion. Do we have a motion yet on the...
There's only, currently, interestingly enough, there's only one motion on the floor and it's to carve out these properties in the P-Bid process.
I want to make a motion to move forward with the...
You can't, there can't be competing motions.
I'll just put it this way. I'm supportive.
Okay.
That makes it a mystery, I guess.
All right.
Of you.
All right. So, I don't have any other council members to punch up. Okay. Council member Soria.
So, I will be supporting the P-Bid or the continuing of the P-Bid. I do see, and I've seen the direct benefits. I've met with a number of folks that are part of it. I think that it's a great thing for the downtown. I see P-Bids as great benefits to neighborhoods like the downtown. I know that we are exploring something similarly in the tower district and I think that it would be very beneficial. So, I will be happy to be supporting today.
So, I'll make a couple of comments here. And I'm going to really speak to the motion on the floor right now. So, both of the property owners are in my district and I haven't met with either one of them. And for all the sincerity that William Bruce may have, I don't think he's called me and tried to meet with me about his dissatisfaction with P-Bid. That's just kind of my first comment. And the other gentleman didn't, to my knowledge, has not tried to meet with me either. I'm their district representative and I really, very truly feel that if, if it was that much of a concern to them, that I would have heard about these feelings of disappointment with the P-Bid some time ago. So, I won't be supportive of the motion. I think that we have to be very careful about kind of arbitrarily carving people out because they write us a letter or come and testify. You know, we set the boundaries on the P-Bid. It was an election and from everything I can tell, the election was fair. It was supported overwhelmingly, you know, three to one by property owners. So, I think that if we run into this process right now, then every year, we're going to get somebody else that wants to carve out and before you know it, the property owners that are, the vast majority of property owners that are trying to, that are in support of the P-Bid, it would diminish the entire program ultimately. So, I won't be supportive of that and I think, you know, finally, it's just, it's really not the right, the right approach or right route to go down in relationship to this. Council member Brand.
You city attorney, can we legally carve people out?
Yes. The law says literally that you may revise the boundaries to exclude properties if you find that those properties would not benefit from the P-Bid.
Okay. We're talking two properties? Is that correct? Two properties out of, out of how many? Is that percentage-wise?
Councilman Brown, that's correct. We're talking about two, but I think that the challenge here is we're attempting to craft a process and a organization that makes it really difficult to do our jobs fairly, not, not just to these two property owners, but to the rest. Because it's going to be very difficult just to summarily say that these two property owners will not be participating and not paying, but at the same time, they're not getting any services. It's just not logical. If we're providing services on both sides of those buildings, you can't just say it stops right here. It's like you've got a, you've got, I hate to say the term here, it's like a county island. We don't do anything in the county island. It just won't work that way. Those property owners who are paying, it's not even in their better interest and yet they would be precluded from doing anything that has anything to do with these two properties because they're not participants. I think that the better approach here, and I did have a talk with Tom and I think he's a heck of a nice guy. And if there's something that could, if I would say about us, if we have failed to reach out to him or to make sure that he's aware of what's going on, that's our fault. On the other hand, if it's not, if what we've been doing is just simply not to the level of benefit that he was hoping for, we could probably all say that. We could say that about every dollar of property taxes we pay. If you gave me the choice of saying, "Do you want to pay your property taxes or do you would rather not because you're not getting the appropriate benefit?", there wouldn't be any property taxes anymore. So, it's really, that's the really, real basis of that here. And that is, our job is we're never going to have everybody satisfied, just like every decision you make. You have to weigh that every time you're making one and it's a tough position you're in. We're in a microcosm of the kind of position you're in, but we learn something here very carefully right now. And that is, we've got to do a better job of making sure everybody understands. That being said, as hard as you all try, week after week, not, you never walk out of this council chamber with knowing in your heart that everybody you have dealt with is happy with the decision you made. And it's always tougher when you're dealing with the dollars and cents, but without the dollars and cents, we can't make our downtown better. And you can't do it individually without us, otherwise, we wouldn't have this Property Owners Association because you would have enough cash in your general fund to do all the work that we're helping to support you with in this loose partnership that we've got together. So, that's why it's important to keep it together. We will do everything we can do to work with these two property owners. I think what Aaron said about the second one, council member Olivier, I mean, I think there's two things. I'm more concerned about what I heard with Tom, but I think there's, I think that what I can do is become a strong proponent and ally of Tom over time. That would be my commitment to you. But I think it's really, really difficult for us to think that we can help you, help the other people living downtown, but at the same time say, "But we can't help here and we can't help there" because that's still all part of one community down here. I would really encourage you to consider that and recognize, again, it may not be the best, cleanest, easiest decision for you, but I do think it's the right one.
Thanks for the clarification, Tom. You know, I agree. I think it, I have sympathy for the people, but I think it's a bad precedent. You know, I think, I think most of these people had the opportunity in 2009 to get out of it. I think people that didn't want out were carved out. And it really gets down to splitting hairs and it's almost like you're still receiving the benefits, but you're not making the cost. And so, although I'm sympathetic, I understand and I can't support the motion based on the logic and organizational nightmares you could have because, and again, this is done all over the state and the nation and it's been very successful and you're never going to get 100%. So, thank you.
Thanks, council member Brand. Council member Olivier.
Yeah, just for the sake of argument, wondering, obviously, these property owners had a chance to get out years ago and they're asking to be out today. And I appreciate Mr. Richards, your, your offer to take the other property owner under your wing and kind of sponsor him through it. I think that's fantastic to step up that way. And everyone, my question is, if they're not let out today, when would be the, like, let's say that we let them out, so some miracle, everybody in this room says, "Sure, let them out," and we vote that way and let them out. When would be the next opportunity for property owners to try and get out? Seven years? So, it would be two let out in 14 years? It's, well, the past seven years, no one was let out, right? Past five years. So, five years, so 12 years, two out in 12 years. I mean, it's not, it's not exactly an exodus for the door. So, I would ask my colleagues to reconsider if you're thinking about voting against it and to support the motion and let out the two property owners. If it fails, then naturally, we'll, we'll vote on the P-Bid. Thank you. Oh, yeah, Mr. Doyle.
Dan Doyle, just for clarity, we do go through a process and we went through a process this year, too, where we invited comment from the shareholders and we did make some modifications this year, you know, tweaks in the boundaries. And the challenge always is, if I'm in the middle of it, it's very difficult to exclude somebody in the very middle. But we did make some changes this year and that is part of the process to change, you know, expand or contract. Boundaries are an option and we went through that option. And we did get input and took that into consideration, got the petition signed by the shareholders that took it to the vote. So, there was a process and these share, these property owners had that opportunity to share their thoughts and we may have had some discussion with them and probably did maybe. So, it's not like there's no opportunity for people to offer input. Just wanted to share that, so.
And thank you for that. And so, since Tom is adopting the other guy, we need someone to adopt Mr. Bruce, property owner at 1752 Van Ness. So, we got one. Aaron, you're in. All right. Thank you, counsel.
Council member Capriolio.
Briefly, I appreciate the internal ability to solve these questions and issues and I think that's a great format and a great way to do it. And obviously, you have done it, so it works. To answer my colleagues' questions, then, this time next year, I guess they could make a presentation as to why they should be excluded with a little more substantial evidence than a simple request. And likewise, you would have the opportunity, as you had said, that being in the middle of it, of course, you're going to benefit something. And I agree to a mural, but I don't want to pay anymore. I mean, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But I think there's a process in place from the grassroots to the council. We would be, I guess, like the Supreme Court. Thank you.
All right. Well, we've had a pretty lively debate on the first motion here. I think we're going to, we're going to vote. I'm going to ask us to vote electronically. So, yes would support carving these two properties out, no would not. So, the motion fails five to two with council members Baines, Quintero, Soria, Brand, and Capriolio voting no. Council member, so now, just, so we can move on. We still don't have a motion on the floor and I'll make a motion that we accept, except, as a matter of fact, city attorney, how do I need to make this motion?
Approve the resolution.
Approve the resolution. I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution. Council member Brandow is my second. I mean, council member Brand is my second. Council member Brandow, you're up.
I'm up? Or council member Brand? All right, you're up. Got it. I wish that guy would change his name. I appreciate all the comment. I hope you understood why I felt like I had to represent that guy's voice a little bit and I'll probably contact him and maybe let him know that he'd like to have a discussion with Tom.
I meant to say this to you. He just wanted me to let you know that he had to go back to work. That's the only reason he left.
Oh, right on. Thank you. Thank you. And Tom, I appreciate your integrity and willingness to follow up on that and I know, and I know you'll do it. So, I'm going to be, of course, supportive of the bigger motion today, which is to support P-Bid. So, thanks for all your hard work and keep it up.
Council member Brand. All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you. You're welcome. All right. The city attorney, I think we are going to adjourn the closed session.
Have we done unscheduled communication?
We in fact have not. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on any item today? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dice. Can you make our closed session announcement?
Remaining item, closed session, begin with conference with labor negotiators concerning all of the Unit 2 listed classes. We have a labor negotiator concerning the listed bargaining units. And then, we have public employee performance evaluation of the city clerk and conference with labor negotiator concerning the city clerk. I would not expect any announcements afterwards.